Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report?
At this time, there's nothing to report.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, David Kasseres, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lister, here. Councilmember Louvenos, here. Councilmember Judge, here. Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh, here. Mayor Mashburn, here.
Due to the continued spread of the COVID-19 virus, the city council chambers are again closed to the public. Meetings of the Simi Valley City Council will be virtual until further notice. However, there are still opportunities for the public to participate in this council meeting. The public statements are received via Zoom. As noted on the agenda, the public was encouraged to register no later than 3:30 PM today if they wish to speak via Zoom. Written comments are also accepted by email. Those emails have already been provided to the city council, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Okay, before we get to the agenda review and the agenda for tonight, I would just like to give a quick shout out to Councilmember Mike Judge and congratulate him on his recent retirement and thank you for the 30-plus years of service. And I have to the LA Police Department. And knowing, and we've heard so much with first responders and police officers in particular, that once you sign up as a police officer, you're a police officer 24 hours a day. So while you served officially in LAPD, since you're 24 hours a day, that tells me that you've probably served more hours as a police officer in Simi Valley than you have anywhere. And I want to thank you for your service, thank you for your service in the Army, and wish you nothing but the best for your retirement.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, agenda review, are there any items for review?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a supplemental for agenda item 8B. It, the numbers in the staff report as the costing for the general fund were inaccurate. The new numbers are actually lower. So we have that available to you and it's on your desk this evening.
Thank you. Any others? No, okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Motion second, we'll call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, we will move forward.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, a proclamation declaring September 15th, 2021 to October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and city council members. It is my pleasure to present the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month this evening. Whereas the Hispanic people have had a profound and positive influence on Simi Valley through their strong commitment to family, faith, and community, and whereas honoring Hispanic heritage nationally began in 1968 when President Lyndon Johnson proclaimed Hispanic Heritage Week, and 20 years later President Ronald Reagan expanded the honor to encompass a month of days in 1988. And whereas during Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the culture and traditions of Simi Valley residents who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the Hispanic community has influenced Simi Valley by enhancing and shaping the whole community with traditions and culture that reflect multi-ethnic and multicultural customs and celebrations that are interwoven into the fabric of our city. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a call to action to reaffirm our respect, appreciation, and support for the Hispanic community, and to ensure that they, like all persons, are afforded the same rights, privileges, and advantages to pursue their dreams. Now therefore, September 15th through October 15th is hereby proclaimed Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Simi Valley. To celebrate the generations of Hispanics who have enriched our community, we recognize their contributions and reaffirm our commitment to a strong and inclusive community that recognizes and celebrates all cultures and people and the values of dignity and respect.
Thank you. I would like to ask Councilmember Louvenos to tell the Hispanic folks that speak Spanish for the most part and aren't English speakers, would you explain to them what just occurred, the proclamation? And would you also advise them that while all of us up here on the dais do not speak Spanish, we certainly know we have a large community of Hispanics here in Simi Valley, and we appreciate them, and we look out for their good just like we do for everybody in this city?
I'm going to translate for the mayor. He says that we want to acknowledge in this city how many Hispanics contribute to this community. This is a proclamation for the month of September, which is from mid-July to October. And I would like to ask, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, if we can continue to seek the services out for translation for our city council meetings for those who are not bilingual. There are many Latinos that are bilingual like myself, but there are some that are monolingual, and I know they would like to participate. So I will ask, in honor of our proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month, that we seek that service for simultaneous translation via Zoom for our city council meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may, the meeting this evening should be translated into Spanish on our Granica speed.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D2, a proclamation declaring the month of September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month, and Kristin Tiggnak is here for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and city council members. The month of September 2021 is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month. This important proclamation reads, whereas 4.8 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and whereas, in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are needed more than ever, and whereas, many individuals have a diagnosable, treatable condition, and in many cases, suicide can be prevented, and whereas, wait, sorry, whereas, as a community, we must strive to build safe and supportive environments for those facing mental health issues, because when individuals are ashamed and at risk of suicide, they are discouraged from seeking life-saving help. And whereas, the Simi Valley community is working to increase the awareness of suicide prevention resources and reduce the associated stigma surrounding mental health issues by such programs as the Youth Council's Suicide Prevention Campaign that includes a rock painting night designed to share available resources and engage the community in spreading messages of hope and help to those in need. And whereas, the Youth Council and Simi Valley Unified School District annually partner in printing crisis resource numbers on the back of all middle and high school identification cards for easy access to resources. And whereas, the goal of Suicide Prevention Month is to embrace the reality of mental illness, educate the community about risk factors and signs of suicidal behavior, and provide awareness of preventative measures to help those at risk. And whereas, positive mental health is a central component of a healthy community. Now therefore, the month of September 2021 is hereby proclaimed Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Simi Valley to reduce the incidence of suicide, presented this 13th day of December 2021.
Thank you. I think it needs to be noted that on the 15th, that we're having the Mental Health Forum, and I'm sure suicide will be one of the subjects discussed there, and this council has asked for more information from the county regarding services that they provide. And I think a shout out to the Youth Council for so much that they have done on this subject matter is very much appreciated. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D3, a proclamation declaring the month of September 2021 as Emergency Preparedness Month, and Eileen Connors is here for this presentation.
I'm going to embarrass Eileen real quick, because I'm not quite sure if the council has met Eileen Connors, who is our emergency services manager. We welcome you to our council meeting, Eileen, thank you for being here. Now you can put a face to the name, well, a face to the eyes.
Thank you, sir. I believe the only one I haven't met is Councilmember Louvenos. Much gusto, senora. Mr. Mayor, council members?
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Whereas, September is National Preparedness Month, which is an important opportunity for Simi Valley residents and businesses to prepare for any type of emergency where they live, work, and play. And whereas, National Preparedness Month helps individuals take steps towards personal preparedness and ensures that households, workplaces, schools, institutions of higher learning, houses of worship, and community-based organizations are prepared for a disaster and to reduce fatalities and economic devastation following a major crisis. And whereas, participation in online community emergency response team training will increase the number of citizens who take action to increase their preparedness at their own pace and understand what types of disasters could happen in our community, whether man-made or natural, know what to do to be safe and mitigate damage. And whereas, emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen in Simi Valley, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that our community is prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas, participating in National Preparedness Month activities will ensure that our community becomes a leader in preparedness and contributes to our nation's resilience. Now therefore, the month of September 2021 is hereby proclaimed Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Simi Valley, a time to prepare, to encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to participate in preparedness activities and work toward creating a more resilient Simi Valley, presented this 13th day of September 2021.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. All comments submitted by email have been provided to the city council, however, they will not be read by the city clerk tonight. All persons who registered by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during this public statement, item 2, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record, and we do have one caller.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker tonight on item 2, and this is Mr. Rocky Rhodes.
Okay, let's go ahead with Mr. Rhodes.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, and city staff. My name is Rocky Rhodes, I live in the Bridle Path community, I've been a resident of Simi for about 11 years now. I'm going to comment today on an item coming before you on appointments to the Youth Empowerment or Youth Employment Services Program. I was honored to be on the interview committee, and we had some outstanding candidates for the position, I'm very excited to have them placed on the advisory board. But I also wanted to give a special shout out to Kristin Tiggnak, who does a fantastic job in our city, looking out for our youth and organizing us even in this crazy COVID time. That's all I had for this presentation, and thank you for the time.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A1, Appointment of Youth Employment Service Advisory Board Members, and Kristin Tiggnak is here for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council, again. Since 1982, the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board has advised the city council on matters related to youth employment. The board is comprised of 18 members. A total of 12 positions are vacant, five regular, four designated, and three alternate member positions. On August 25th, a YES Advisory Board interview subcommittee interviewed the eligible applicants and nominated six for appointment. Additionally, the neighborhood councils, Simi Valley Unified School District, and the Simi Valley Youth Council nominated representatives for their four vacant positions on the YES Advisory Board. If appointed, the applicants will serve terms commencing on September 14th, 2021, and concluding on June 30th, 2023, with the exception of the three alternate members whose terms will conclude on June 30th, 2022 pursuant to resolution number 2015-01, in order to maintain staggered terms of office, or sorry, staggered terms of appointment, and the youth council representative whose term is for one year due to the youth council terms of service. The following individuals are being nominated this evening for appointment. At-large Representative Gloria Bowman, fitness instructor at the city of Calabasas; local business representative Tim Harrington, regional account executive Deluxe Financial; local government representative Anthony Angelini, field representative, office of Assemblywoman Suzette Valaderas; neighborhood council representative Robert Perez, Neighborhood Council, District 3; Simi Valley Unified School District Representatives Tammy Harder, work experience teacher at Simi Valley High School; and Jennifer Wigdor, the toupee and Naviance coordinator with the Simi Valley Unified School District Main Office; Youth Council Representative Ian Nelson; alternative members Ryan Fowler, community member and student leadership program coordinator with the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute; Mary Poitier, community member; and Eric Verway, community member and fire captain with Los Angeles Fire Department. The Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, the YES Advisory Board, the neighborhood councils, the Simi Valley Unified School District, and the Simi Valley Youth Council recommend that city council approve and the mayor appoint applicants nominated to the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board. This concludes the report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? How about a motion?
Mayor, I have a question, I requested to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see that.
Have we had in the past, on the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, have we had employees of elected officials? Would that be a conflict of interest? That was my only concern.
Oh, you mean the staff members representing the offices of elected officials?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And there hasn't been an issue of...
There's no conflict of interest there? Okay, yeah, I'm just curious.
Oh, okay.
May I make a motion?
Please do.
I move that we approve all the appointed from today's, or excuse me, from Kristin's, I can't even talk. I move that we approve all the nominated people.
All 10 applicants?
All 10 applicants, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, there are no items this evening under public hearings. I apologize, I skipped 3A2. Sorry about that. The next item on the agenda is item 3A2, selection of two city council members to conduct interviews and nominate prospective commissioners for two vacancies on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners, and Eric Chen is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction self-appoints two commissioners, and one resident commissioner is jointly appointed by all the representing jurisdictions. Due to the recent passing of Commissioner Margaret Noble, the city has one unscheduled vacancy to fill with term ending December 10th, 2023. The turn of the second commissioner position held by Commissioner Marcus Crouchfield shall end on September 30th, 2021. Hence, the city has, hence the city must proceed to fill the two vacancies. A recruitment was initiated on August 30th, included on September 12th. Through various means of outreach, including press release, SV Television Bulletin Board postings, and social media posts, the city received 16 applications for the two positions. It is anticipated that interviews will be conducted in late September or early October, and will take about three to four hours. Appointments by the city council are scheduled to occur at the October 11th city council meeting and allow the new commissioners to be placed in their first board meeting in late October. Therefore, to proceed with interview process, it is recommended that two city council members be selected to conduct the Area Housing Authority Commissioner interviews and nominate prospective commissioners for appointment. This concludes staff report, I'm available for questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just heard of the passing of Margaret a couple of weeks ago, and I was very sad to hear that. Margaret has served the East County and our city very well on that commission. I'd like to volunteer to be on that board.
Mayor, I'd like to volunteer as well.
So we have two, all right. Did you volunteer?
Yes.
And we have three.
No, I'm fine with those two, if they wish to.
Oh, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I had volunteered, but that's, but whatever.
Councilmember Judge, Councilmember Lister, and Councilmember Louvenos. Three, and you only need two, but I would think we'll have two and an alternate also, that's the way things go. So how do you want to make that decision? You want to look at your calendars and see who's going to be?
Yeah, they don't have dates yet.
He suggested it'd be the end of September, early October.
Well, Mayor, given the fact that, you know, I've been a housing advocate since I got elected, and definitely, you know, have a lot of, you know, background in land use, having studied in law school, that's why I would ask to be on this, and I've never gotten the opportunity to do this. So that's why I'm requesting to be one of the interviewers.
Have we, I'm sorry, when's the last time that we appointed this position? How long has it been?
Been four years.
It's been four years, so, okay. So the availability to appoint has been a while, I'm just trying to understand, okay. So it hasn't been appointed for four years.
Okay, so what did you just say?
No, I just was trying to understand the context of Councilmember Louvenos's statement of not having a chance to, so I was trying to understand, I mean, yeah, I was trying to understand the context of when we could appoint this. So this is an unusual appointment that takes place once every four years, and in this case, it is more, there are two, because of her untimely passing, there, we are appointing two positions.
So have you ever served on that commission, Councilmember Louvenos?
Have I served on the Housing Authority Commission? No, I've asked, but I've been denied the opportunity, so I'm very well aware of what they do, and I've sat in on their meetings, so I'm familiar with what they do.
Okay, and yourself, have you ever served?
I've not served there, and certainly I have a master's in earth planning, however, I do think that I would like Mike Judge to have that opportunity with his background, so I certainly would, would think he should be the first consideration, but with all that he's done and...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint myself and Councilmember Judge to interview for these vacancies.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a subsequent motion that myself and Councilmember Lister sit on the board to appoint the vacancies.
Okay, we'll vote on the first motion, it has a second, so we'll vote.
Motion fails. Two voting yes, two voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay. Councilmember Judge, you want to make that motion?
So I'm making motion that myself and Councilmember Lister sit on the board for the Area Housing Authority, picking a member, two members.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, call for the vote. Okay, call for the vote again.
Motion passes with Councilmember Louvenos voting no. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, there's no items this evening under public hearings. The next item on the agenda is item 5, Public Statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. All persons who registered by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during the public statements, item 5, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we will begin the Zoom public statements. Currently, we have two registered.
Okay, I'll be brief with the statement, I'd just like everybody to understand that we can't necessarily respond to the statements or questions that are asked during public statements. It's, it would be a Brown Act violation for not having an agenda item. There can be very brief statements back, but please understand that we're here to listen, and we are listening, and it's not an attempt to be rude, it's quite contrary to that. So with that, we'll go with the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Stacy Vanderchafe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Stacy Vanderchaf.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Stacy Vanderchaf. I am a Simi Valley resident. At the last City Council meeting, about a dozen people from the neighborhood next to the proposed JM Square Development Residential Care Facility site spoke about why they opposed the project. These residents were extremely well-prepared and made some excellent points about concerns regarding traffic and wildfire safety in the area. I'm glad that they took the time to communicate with each other about their concerns, and that they showed up to the City Council meeting to present these concerns to you, and by proxy, the entirety of Simi Valley. I understand that this conflict between developer and residents was a very difficult matter for you to decide, mainly because, as Mayor Mashburn pointed out, the California State Legislature has found a way to circumvent the power of local city government in deciding what is built within city limits. In addition, a Ventura County judge ruled that the project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. According to our city attorney, our city attorney, Simi Valley has about a 10% chance of succeeding if the city decides it wants to continue to fight this project in the courts. Mayor Mashburn, you are right. It's not prudent to spend taxpayer dollars on something we are not going to win, especially considering the risk of an even more egregious higher-density project that may come along and fill in the site in the future if the lot remains vacant. Councilmember Kavanaugh, I appreciated you echoing the concern that the state has taken away control of local cities and local zoning. I agree with you that the proposed residential care facility is not housing. It's a business because it provides medical care and assisted living. I hope that the City Council does everything in its power to make absolutely sure that this project counts toward the state mandated RINA requirements, as Councilwoman Lister mentioned. I also hope that the City Council follows through on the idea that the money that would have been spent fighting this battle in court will be used to make safety improvements in the area to address residents' traffic concerns. Councilmember Kavanaugh, you pointed out an important contrast between how JM Square Development approached their project and how the developers of the old farmer's building site handled their project. The developers at the Sycamore site reached out to the surrounding community, and in the end, they won over at least some support from that community. The city of Simi Valley needs to send a message to the developer world that this "my way or the highway" approach is going to have an impact on their bottom line. Developers who fail to work with the city and its neighborhoods need to be put on notice that uncooperative attitudes will eat away at their profits due to delayed approvals, inspections, or permits. It's pretty clear that Simi residents are frustrated with how things have gone in the city with recent developments. Thank you, City Council members, for hearing our frustrations and for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Rocky Rhodes?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening again. Before my comment, I just want to echo the congratulations to Councilman Judge on your retirement. I know that you've been working hard to get to this point, and we're all happy for you. I wanted to take a moment to reflect on this past weekend in our town and thank the many service organizations that put together 9/11 remembrance events. And I think many of us participated in those events, and it is... I think it's very telling of the soul of our community, and particularly people of the generation that lived through 9/11, that we know, understand, and feel the danger that is present in our world, and that we try and educate our children and our youth that this is real and it happened. I recently pulled out a videotape that I made on the morning of 9/11, a video to my daughter, because she was going to be the last graduating class of high school that would have been alive during 9/11. And in the recording, I told her that this happened in your lifetime. It's not just something you learn in history class, and it changed the world that day. And I was really, again, proud of our service organizations that took the time and the effort to volunteer and put these memorial events on. And thank you to the city for all of your participation in making these events happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the council?
Just to say that, thank you both of you. Your remarks were so articulate and on point, and appreciate comments, your participation, and thank you, Stacy. Your observation is spot on, that we need to continue to work with our developers, and they need to work with our community. And thank you. The Rotarians and those of our community were just outstanding with all the work that they did this weekend to commemorate the events of 20 years ago and that we will never forget. And we need to remember and celebrate our freedoms and the costs that it takes to maintain them. So thank you, Rocky.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, just a couple quick comments. Yes, thank you both for your comments this evening. They were very nice, very articulate on our situation with JM Squared, and then Mr. Rhodes for recognizing these service clubs. It was wonderful. All five council members attended the event at Rancho Simi... Excuse me, Rancho Taplo Park. And I just wanted to thank Rotary Club of Simi Sunset was the primary sponsor of that. But I know I saw Kiwanians out there. I saw Chamber people out there. I saw other Rotarians. And it was really a wonderful event. And also, thank you to the Park District. Paul Friedborn is the supervisor for that area. And they did a great job in being able... In coming up with a way for us to be able to drop flowers into the... It's not a pond. It's a lake. Yes, everyone calls it the pond. It's not. But I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized for going out of the way to help make this event also special. Thank you.
Okay. I too want to say thank you to both speakers tonight. I certainly appreciate what appears to be someone who has studied and understood the predicament we were in on that one development. And I appreciate that study and the comments. Also, the 9/11 ceremony held at the... I call it Lemon Park. Veterans Park? Anything. And it was a great ceremony, and I want to thank the, I think it was the Evening Club, Evening Rotary Club that did so much work. And then, of course, the participants, like the Honor Guard consisted of Marines, county firefighters, county sheriffs, Simi PD, and who am I missing? I'll get in trouble. But it was a great ceremony and very humbling and worthwhile, and it said a great deal about our community. So thanks to everybody involved. And of course, the Park District and Ed Avila, who was there reading names, along with Councilmember Luvenos and many others. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item six, the Consent Calendar. And there are three resolutions for your consideration this evening. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Consent item seven, resolution number 2021-33, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley authorizing transfer of unclaimed property to the Department of Administrative Services for use by the city. Consent item eight, resolution number 2021-34, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley accepting the final map subdivision improvement agreement and approving securities for the construction of public improvements for tract number 6055 located at 1800 Taplo Canyon Road. And consent item nine, resolution number 2021-35, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley authorizing the execution of the recipient's certifications and assurances for the California Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program funded by Senate Bill One, SB One, for fiscal year 2021-22.
Okay. Moving forward on the consent calendar, numbers to be polled. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor. Sorry, I didn't have my microphone. I'd like to pull item 6, four. Item four from the consent. I just have a quick question. Item four.
Okay. And Councilmember Lister?
And item five. I'm sorry. Four and five, Mayor. Sorry.
Four and five?
That's what she wanted. Four was what I was going to ask, just because... Yeah. So we're at the same one. We're fine. Four for me as well.
Okay.
Number four.
Number four. Got it. Okay, let's address number four.
My question is... I'm waiting for whoever's staff to come forward. Good evening. Thank you. I have a question. I'm glad that we're receiving this $237,000 from the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Relief. I just want to make sure that... Because in the previous rounds of support that we've given to our business owners in the city, there were many that were not aware of them, or the process and how to apply, and our website is very burdensome and difficult to maneuver. So is it possible for us to advertise availability of these funds in multiple languages? We do have business owners that speak Chinese and Arabic and Spanish, and to spread the word as widely as possible to our struggling business owners.
This is actually a grant we're receiving.
No, I know. It's a grant we're receiving. Oh, just for us, not for other business owners?
Yes. This is because we had a shuttered theater venue. The federal government...
For the cultural arts center?
Yes, yes. So this is money that is coming to the city for our use.
Okay, and will that account for the use of funds for the manager that was not displaced during the pandemic?
So we'll put this on the agenda for the Arts Commission, for them to take a look at potential uses. Ms. Medina will put together a staff report, and Mr. Helsel will put together a staff report that'll go to the commission for them to consider possible uses of the funds.
Will that come back to us before those funds are used, or no?
Normally, it doesn't, but we can provide a report to the council. We can provide a memo to the boxes that you know the commission's recommendation for use of the funds.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and I... Thank you, if I may. Actually, the reason that I had wanted to maybe pull this is just simply to congratulate and discuss.
I want to congratulate you too on giving...
What's outstanding is that they applied for a $131,800 grant and received a $232,700 grant. So basically, they received over $100,000 more than what they asked for.
That's cold, new math.
I love it when it goes that direction. And I understand it was based on 45% of gross earned revenues. I'm guessing the Business Administration calculated things differently than we did, which is fine. They're welcome to do so in that direction. And so, well, I'm sure that this puts our theater, our cultural arts in a wonderful stead right now to have this grant. Is there anything you want to add more about the process or about this event?
Yes, it definitely helps the Cultural Arts Center. And in fact, they just notified us, and will be coming back on September 27th, that they were awarded an additional $131,800.
So all we can say is wonderful. And that will go towards wonderful programming and support of our cultural activities, so that's exciting. That was recognized. And also, I think what it speaks to is, in order to get that grant, we had to show truly what our expenses and revenues had been in 2019. We had to really demonstrate that, and it speaks to the bookkeeping that was taking place in the city and at that facility. So thank you.
Good job. Good job. Okay, motion? Oh, sorry. Oh, we could do a motion on four.
Is there anyone here for five?
Five.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, how may I address your questions?
Yes, I was just curious, because I had people... I had residents who were asking me about what the selective traffic enforcement program includes, and if that includes... I know it's in the report, but not everyone reads it. If it includes DUI stops.
Yes, it does.
And how those DUI stops are determined?
Well, they're based on objective symptomology of the driver. So when you're doing DUI enforcement, one of the things you're looking for is a pattern of driving. So if you see a car driving down the road that's maybe weaving between lanes, or does some kind of blatant traffic violation, a moving violation of some type, maybe running a stop sign, running a red light, those are things that draw attention to that car long before we know who the occupant is. Once we make that car stop, then we're looking at those objective symptoms of being DUI. They might be maybe some of the things that we can see based on their symptomology of the breath, maybe some of the ways that they're handling themselves. And those are the things that lead us to start conducting a DUI investigation.
Okay, but does this include DUI, you know, stops? Like, there was one that was last weekend, and they seem to be centered in a certain part of the city.
Okay, so you're talking about DUI checkpoints. Completely different issue. And there is a couple different objectives in a DUI checkpoint. We're also looking for drivers that are unlicensed and driving on a suspended license, as well as drivers who may be driving under the influence. So what we're looking for is areas of the city where we have the highest traffic concentration and generally the most traffic collisions. And we're looking at ways to potentially reduce the number of traffic collisions. So that's why we choose the areas that we choose.
Okay, so you do look at the data of actual traffic collisions and traffic accidents to determine those DUI checkpoints?
Yes, that's some of the criterion that we're utilizing, yes.
Does excessive speed count as well? Because, you know, I've had residents that have asked me, hey, there are certain parts of the city that we never see these DUI checkpoints, but there's people that are speeding like crazy.
Sure.
So how do you determine that?
Well, we have to look at... We're going to be putting out a significant amount of resources and spending quite a bit of money that this grant is allowing us to spend to enforce these activities. So we want to get the most bang for our buck, and we're going to be going to areas that are going to have the highest degree of traffic volume. There are some areas of the city that you might be indicating that you may see people driving at a high rate of speed, but you may not have a lot of traffic in a general sense in that area. So yes, there are traffic problems, and we try to address those. But for these types of checkpoints, we're looking for the largest number of traffic people that are actually driving, so we can make sure that we're assessing those issues.
And notification is given when those checkpoints are set up. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, the state of California requires us to not only notify prior to having one of these, but also provide escape routes for people. There's a lot of laws that we have to comply with, that we do comply with.
Okay, and is... Will we get a report? I love that you guys are applying for these grants and getting this funding for the city, but will we get a report of the effectiveness of the use of these funds? Like, did it actually reduce DUIs? Did it actually reduce traffic collisions? Will we get a report on that?
We can provide reports like that. The problem is you can't always correlate the number of arrests with whether or not DUI activity ceases. That's sometimes just a stigma of the actual population itself. I can make a number of arrests, and you might say, well, that's... The police department's being very successful. However, we still might not stop every DUI crash. Certainly, our goal is to be out there enforcing these types of investigations, but we may not stop every one of them. So we have to continue our efforts.
So there's no before and after, like, just... I mean, I'm not saying use the number of arrests, but just to know that we're using these grants effectively?
Oh, absolutely. We have to report back to the grant provider to show that we're complying with the terms of the grant. So you'll certainly be available to see those types of reports if you need to. But as far as drawing a conclusion that I've made so many DUI checkpoints and therefore reduced the amount of traffic fatalities, that isn't always something that can be done, that can be shown with statistics.
Okay, can I request a copy of the report from this when it's done?
Are you talking about what we send back to the grant group?
Yes.
Certainly, we can give that to all councils if you'd like.
Thank you so much.
And we'll coordinate that through the city manager's office.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think the chief has answered this question a couple of times for us previously. But this particular grant is not for the DUI checkpoints.
It actually is for... That's a portion of it. So we do that in addition to many other things, but that's one component.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
How many cities in the county do you know have a surface street of 50 miles an hour?
I don't have that information. I know that there's quite a few.
I can name one. That's us.
Yeah, we're the ones that have a higher...
We've got some fast streets.
And you're familiar with a city that has much lower speeds for most of their streets.
And they still get a lot of drunks.
Yes. And if I can just take a moment, congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Got a motion and second to approve 1 through 9. Call for the vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Luvenos abstaining. Mr. Mayor and member of the City Council, Mr. Mayor and member of the City Council, there are no items this evening under item seven, Continued Business, and the next item on the agenda is item 8A, Consideration of Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the Memorandum of Agreement with the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, Local 721, and Samantha Arca-Bright is here for this presentation.
And, and Mayor, before we start, could I have, like, 20 seconds to quickly grab something off the copy machine about this item? But I will be back in 15 seconds. Wait.
No, I apologize, no. Mayor, Mayor, may I move for a one-minute recess so the Councilwoman Lister can get her items?
That's what, I, thank you, that, just one minute.
Thank you. We've got a recess. Okay. Meeting back in order.
I apologize, thank you.
With an apology. From Councilmember Littler.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Councilmembers. Um, this evening, we are going to be speaking about three labor agreements. We'll be presenting you SEIU, POA, and management. The first item that we will be discussing are the Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the Memorandum of Agreement with the Service Employees International Union, Local 721, or SEIU, and this is the first labor agreement for your consideration. Before I go any further, though, I would like to introduce the city's negotiating team. Um, I have Joe Tony, our Administrative Services Director, and Shannon Nash, our Senior Human Resources Analyst. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the City Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included addressing salary increases, tax implications for the payout of annual leave, and balancing the timing of cost increases. Staff has been meeting with representatives from SEIU, and the proposed revisions to their agreement is before you this evening. The resolution, or the, sorry, the agreement before you is a two-year term that includes 3.75% in salary increases over the next two years, as illustrated on this slide. The first increase would take effect following City Council approval. The next increase would be a 1.75 increase effective July 1st of 2022. Following that, there would be a 2% one-time payment to employees effective for the first full pay period following the implementation of the 2% salary increase. I will now briefly review the remaining points of the agreement on the screen. This slide has a number of points, um, but quickly, we would maintain the 80/20 medical cost sharing with SEIU. Members can accrue up to 120 hours of compensatory time, up from 100 hours, and this would be in lieu of, uh, them accruing overtime. The boot allowance would be increased for eligible members from $175 a year to $200 a year for eligible members. Employees may roll over the eight-hour floating holiday benefit that they currently receive for a period of one year. Cleanup time was increased for eligible members from 10 minutes to 15 minutes, and employee schedules to work on a city-recognized holiday will no longer be required to make up additional hours from their own leave bank. Effective for calendar year 2022 and ongoing, the cash out of annual leave will be restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December to be in compliance with the Constructive Receipt Doctrine of the IRS. The Me Too clause that previously existed in the SEIU agreement has been removed. We also removed the streets' traffic and storm drain maintenance sections from the Public Works Maintenance Division for those areas that were allowed to wear shorts due to safety concerns. MOA language was also modified in the following areas. Clarification regarding employees' contributions to PERS, deleted references to the Community Services Department, the bereavement section was simplified, and SEIU's membership dues deduction and related language was modified. On slide five, it's a little small up there, but it's in your staff report on page four, and as you can see on the chart, we've broken down the cost to each fund this year. So you can see for the first year of the agreement and the second year of agreement, um, the cost to each fund, as well as the total cost for each year of the agreement. So the total cost for the both years of the agreement is approximately 1.248, uh, 43, I'm gonna try to get that again, $1,248,043. Uh, the PERS normal costs are also included, um, on your staff report on page four. And as you can see in summary, we have a two-year agreement, 3.75% salary increase over the term of those two years, um, also with a 2% one-time payment for employees, um, which would be effective this calendar year. It is recommended that the City Council consider the proposed revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the MOA with SEIU as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the revised MOA, and place this matter on the agenda for September 27th for final determination on the MOA. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you for your time, and we're available for questions.
Your question, Steph. Councilmember Lewevenos.
Yes, how many employees does this MOU cover?
Uh, we have approximately, I want to say like 184?
And are they all full, full-time, or is this full-time and part-time? Okay, you don't have the, you don't happen to have the breakdown?
Not with us.
Okay. Thank you.
We can provide that later, and we'll include that in the report on the 27th.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Just a, a couple of quick questions, if that's all right? Um, I noticed that the Me Too clause has been removed, are, is, and I, I appreciate that we're discussing each of the different contracts, um, and subsequent. Are, are there Me Too clauses in any of the other contracts that we have?
No, not this evening.
So that's been removed from the table, thank you. And I appreciate, I want to understand just what, your last comment. We are not going to be voting tonight necessarily on this, you're presenting it in its entirety so that the public has two weeks to comment and influence and-
That's correct. So as part of the city's policy on labor negotiations, the City Council had created this policy back in the early 2000s, um, and any labor contract has to come to the City Council twice. The first time the agreement comes, this is for the public input portion, as you mentioned, um, so for public viewing and for the opportunity for the, the public to provide comment, they can email us, they can, um, you know, provide public comment at the next meeting, we can incorporate that public comment into the next staff report, so the council is aware of the type of feedback that the community is providing to us. And then, um, at the next meeting on September 27th, when we bring this item back, would be the time that the council would actually adopt the, um, proposed revisions, if that is the council's desire.
Gotcha, and I, wonderful, and I appreciate that you broke it down according to what fund these, these, these additional funds would be coming from. In this instance, um, the general fund seems to be what we particularly have influence over, I should say, at, at the City Council, um, that if I have my numbers correctly, for this particular contract, it's about 307,000 additional this fiscal year, about 307, about 380,000 next fiscal year.
Correct.
So just so people understand, is that currently budgeted in, in some fashion or not, um, for this current fiscal year?
I'll let the Director of Administrative Services speak to that.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, uh, so for this year's budget, we will absorb that in the budget, we do have, it'll mostly come out of salary savings from the year that we've been estimating, uh, next year we will budget appropriately for that.
Okay, and does, and the last question is, um, I know we have CARES Act funds that are being used or being saved, we will be discussing how that, how we'll be using those funds, are they in any way, or are some of those funds going, or possibly used for this salary increase?
Potentially, um, uh, what we will be asking for, or of the City Council with the adoption on, at the next council meeting, would be to give the discretion to the city manager on how to use some of those one-time funds for the one-time, uh, component of, of these contracts.
Of course, once, if we'd use that, though, it's not built in for future, and so ideally, we wanna build such a way it can be perpetuated annually.
Correct.
If I understand correctly, okay, thank you. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
I have one more question, Mayor, if I may. I'm just curious as to why the references to community services were deleted?
Oh, yes, so in the, um, MOA, there is a section that speaks directly to the Transit Division in the Community Services Department, that is the only references to the Communities, Community Services Department in the MOA, um, and now that Transit is under Public Works, the reference to community services no longer made sense, um, and so therefore the reference was removed.
Okay, thank you.
If we could actually get a, thank you.
I'm sorry, there is a proposed motion for, for each one.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve the, uh, contract with SEIU.
Second? No, we're not approving the contract.
We're not approving the contract, yeah. We just want you to-
Accepting the report.
I'm sure they appreciate your support, though.
I move that we accept the report.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 8B, Consideration of Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, and Samantha Arca-Bright will present this item as well.
Hello. So, um, we are going to be discussing the POA's agreement that is proposed this evening. Before I move forward, though, I would like to draw your attention to, last week, the City Council received an email from the President of the POA, Mr. Tim Wiedemeyer. He's unable to attend the meeting this evening, as tonight is one of his regular work nights, but his email did state the POA is in support of this agreement, and you all should have received that email as well. Okay, so the agreement before you is for a two-year term that includes a 3.75% salary increase over the term of the agreement, um, also 2% increase effective following City Council approval, uh, another 1.75% increase would be effective January 1st of 2023, and then a 2% one-time payment to employees effective January 1st, 2022. And then I will briefly review the proposed items for the POA. The semi-flex amount will be set at 100% of the family level for the PORAC PPO for the term of this agreement. Effective for calendar year 2022 and ongoing, the cash out of annual leave will further be restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December, to be in client, compliance with the Constructive Receipt Doctrine of the IRS, and effective for the November 12th, 2021, annual leave cash out. Only police unit employees will have a one-time opportunity to cash out annual leave hours with no limit. Effective following adoption by the City Council, annual leave accrual rates will be increased by approximately one hour for each tier of service as follows. 10 or more years of service will increase their accrual from 10 hours to 11 hours per pay period. Five or more years of service will increase their accrual from eight hours to nine hours of pay period. Less than five years of service will increase their accrual from 6.46 hours to 7.5 hours per pay period. There are also three side letters that will be incorporated into the MOU. There is no Me Too clause in this agreement either, and the primary uniform for police unit employees assigned to the Patrol Bureau shall be the 511 uniform with either the outer wearing vest or the utility belt system. And again, we see the familiar cost slide, um, so this is the slide that it brings good news with it, because in the staff report, the number was higher. The supplemental before you reflects this new revised costing, um, for over the two-year contract term, um, we anticipate that the cost will be approximately $1.2 million, and the normal cost for PERS is included on page three of the staff report, immediately below the cost table. So in summary, this is a two-year agreement with a 3.75% salary increase over the term of those two years, um, with an additional 2% one-time payment to employees effective January 1st of 2022. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council consider the proposed revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the MOU with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this item on the September 27th council agenda for final determination. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
Questions, Steph. Councilmember Lewevenos.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is the same question I asked previously, how many employees does this cover?
Um, we have approximately 124 sworn, um, and eight of those are PMA, so, um, it covers about, what is that, 117? I can't do math right now. Pretty close.
Okay, so 124 minus eight, so, 116, okay.
Math teacher.
I was a math teacher, yeah, 116 employees, okay. And then I noticed that, um, uh, the option to cash out annual leave without limit, is that something we've offered before or, or not?
So typically, each group has their own limits on how much they can cash out, it's set by how much annual leave they accrue. We had a very lengthy discussion with the POA about the cash out, um, there were a couple different reasons for that. With the new IRS Constructive Receipt Doctrine, um, we wanted to ensure people were not cashing out too low, um, to ensure that they had some time to carry over in case there's any kind of illness or emergency, um, but we also want to ensure that with constructive receipt, once the hours are in your bank and the new term starts, so in 2022, you can really no longer access those banked hours, whereas right now you have a lot of flexibility with when you can, um, cash those out. So we wanted to provide them with a little bit more flexibility at their request, and I know that they had a very thorough discussion with their membership to ensure that they were, um, being very cautious about what that would look like for them, but typically there is a limit based on their accrual rate.
Okay, so, but in this, in this agreement, we are allowing the AL cash out without limit? Is that for limited time?
Only on that one cash out for the la, for the last cash out of the year, which is November 12th. So that is the only remaining cash out for this calendar year for, um, all of our groups, and in that one, they will have an opportunity to cash out, um, a little bit more than they've been able to do in the past.
Okay, so is this, is this part of a clause then that's being offered to other groups besides this group?
There, um, have been discussions with other groups, um, you will see when I get to the management one, um, agreement, that they, that there is a discussion about, they will get to exceed their 235-hour limit, um, staff is still looking at options for them as to what kind of maximums they would be looking at.
We should probably discuss that at the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, but this was not offered to SEIU, is that correct?
There was a discussion about it, but, um, it was not part of the final agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll read it this time. After consideration of the proposal revisions of the terms and conditions of Memorandum of Understanding with Police Unit Employees Represented by Simi Valley Police Officer Association, and providing the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final decision, I move to place this matter on the September 27th, 2001 agenda for final determination on the proposed MOU.
Second?
Hey, motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is item 8C, Consideration of Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions to the Resolution for Management Designated Employees, and Samantha Arca-Bright will present this item as well.
This is the last one for the evening. Um, the city's employees are divided into the following four groups for labor relations purposes, general unit employees, police unit employees, police management employees, and management designated employees. Management designated employees are not represented by an employee organization, but while they are not formally represented, staff meets with representatives from each department to better understand- department to better understand interests of employees and to share the city's financial forecasts, as we did with each formal bargaining unit. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, we've previously discussed that council provided policy goals to the negotiations team regarding salary increases, tax implications, and balancing the timing of cost increases. Following the meetings that we had with management, we have the proposed revisions to the resolution that we'll be presenting to you this evening. So the resolution that is before you includes the following: two-year term. This is probably starting to look a little familiar by now, I'm anticipating. 3.75% salary increase over the next two years. Again, 2% salary increase effective following council approval, 1.75% salary increase effective July 1, 2022, and a 2% one-time payment to employees effective for the first full pay period following the implementation of the 2% salary increase. And now I'll briefly review the other proposed terms. Employees scheduled to work on a city-recognized holiday will no longer be required to make up additional hours from their own leave bank, effective for calendar year 2022 and ongoing. The cash out annual leave will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December, to be in compliance with the constructive receipt doctrine of the IRS, and effective for the November 12th, 2021 AL cash out. Management employees will have a one-time opportunity to cash out hours in excess of the 235-hour cap. And then for the 2022 and 2023 health plan years, the city's Simi Flex benefit will continue the 80/20 cost sharing with employees for medical premium cost increases. Again, the really small slide, but as you can see, we also broke down the cost per fund here as well for management. And we also provided the pers normal cost for each fund on page three, immediately below the table. It's anticipated that over the next two years, the cost of this agreement will be approximately $1,490,549, with a cost of about $669,000 for this fiscal year. At this time, it is recommended that the city council consider the proposed revision to the management-designated employee resolution as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this item on the September 27th council agenda for final determination. Thank you for your time. This concludes our report, and we're available for questions.
Okay, questions? We'll start with councilmember Louvenus.
Same question. How many employees are covered in this agreement?
I want to say this one's closer to like 220.
I think what we'll do, we'll make sure those numbers are in the reports when we bring them back. I see a pattern here.
Yes.
I can keep guessing, though, if you want.
We will have those numbers for the next time we discuss this, right? Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, and I appreciate this report. And one of the things I ran to grab, just to make it clear, why in the world I wanted to go grab something off of my desk or off the printer, is I was trying to calculate cumulatively these three different contracts, because you've been very good to present us individually, but I wanted to understand cumulatively its impact on the general fund. And so my calculation is, for the three that we have discussed right now, the effect on the general fund is about 1.389 million in fiscal year 2021/22, and increasing to 1.643 million in 2023. So, and that's specific to the general fund. Obviously, you were very good to break it out to the other funds, housing, et cetera. And so, and I understand, too, that that does not yet include the Police Managers Association. And I thought, I want to make it clear, too, that those who might be general public that might be listening and following this discussion, it also does not include the seven members of the negotiating team who would not, to avoid a conflict of interest, were not negotiating their own contracts. So there's that whole discussion with that body of seven people as well. So I guess going back to the question asked a little bit earlier, Mr. Tony kind of responded. So that impact on the general fund of about 1.39 million, and then following 1.64 million, what does that do to our bottom line? Where do those funds come from? Can you give us a, just kind of a general, are we able to absorb that in how we've budgeted so far, or can you give me a sense of where those funds come from?
Yes, councilmember Lister, we anticipate we'll be able to absorb those funds in this fiscal year. It'll be, you know, we'll have to balance. It'll be tight. But we will definitely be able to budget appropriately going forward.
I do want to also note that the, the one-time 2% payment could be a different funding source. As you mentioned, CARES actually would be American Rescue Plan Act money, which allows for one-time payments. We have the COVID Recovery Fund that could allow for those one-time payments as well. So that is not a reoccurring part of the, of the payment, and could be used for other funding sources that the city currently has.
And that 2% is subsumed in the figures that I just gave, so, right, okay.
That's correct.
That's important to keep in mind. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more question, if I may.
Yes, you may.
What is the pension impact? What is the impact on our pension costs with this, with this increase in salary?
So the normal costs are included in the staff report. So, for example, for the management group, the normal costs for each fund is included right below the table. So for the general fund, it's approximately $18,594 for the first year and about $48,000 for the second year. And then for housing, it's approximately $440 for the first year and about $1,100 the second year. Library is about $200 for the first year and $525 a second year. Sanitation, $2,500 the first year and $6,500 the second year. Transit, $983 for the first year and about $2,500 the second year. Waterworks, about $2,400 the first year and $6,300 the second year. And workers' compensation, $255 the first year and about $659 the second year.
Okay, now that's just for this group, right? But that was broken down in each one of the group sections as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is, this is the normal cost for the management group, and then the normal costs for all of the other groups are included in the staff report.
Okay, and I'm just pointing that out because I know the public who asked me about what are the pension costs, and I want to make sure that they know where to find that in the report, because they're pretty long and they're pretty burdensome, and people were asking me about that. So thank you for pointing that out, and thank you for writing an excellent report.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we consider the proposed revisions to the management-designated employees resolution as presented, give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and to place this matter on the city council agenda for September 27th, 2021, for final determination.
Well, second.
You have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9A, city council member reports.
Okay, before we get to that, let's, if anybody wants to make a general comments, I'd like to on what we just heard, the three agreements, and thank the city, and thank the staff, and thank all the employees that made this negotiations period, I think, a real unifying event. And thank you to the city manager for guiding the city in such a way that there were funds to be able to give each group raises that they very much deserved. So thank you much, and that's my words. Anybody else care to say anything?
I was just going to say, I concur with everything you said. So congratulations to the negotiating team and everybody on a job well done. Thank you.
And I'd like to add one thing, too, if I might, Mayor, that I also appreciate how that we've worked to, to put these negotiations at the same time. I know in the past, they have been staggered, which has, has been a little bit problematic. I appreciate that, that they've worked hard to be able to approach this all at the same time period, so that we can look at it as a totality. And I know that's taken some time and effort and work. So thank you to the negotiators, and also thank you to the labor representation who were willing to be part of that process. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment as well.
Okay.
I just want to thank all of our city employees for hanging in there during this pandemic, everything that we've had to deal with, everything that we've had to go through as a city, and you've all been there, supporting the residents of the city. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for being there. And that's what the, you know, 2% one-time, I know other employees have gotten in Simi Valley Unified School District and other entities in the city have gotten that as well. And this is our thank you for hanging in there with us. And I'm in negotiations for my union. I hope I get something as good as this. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with our reports, and we'll start with the old guy at the end of the counter that just retired. And that'd be councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, August 24th, I had a meeting, I guess, with the city manager. Our meetings are pretty informal. He tells me what's going on. And I listen. My last couple of weeks have been pretty hectic, because I was getting off the rollercoaster ride called the LAPD. I just want to say to all the police officers that might be listening to this broadcast, if they are, and all the firemen out there, if you've just started your careers, 31 years moves very fast. It might not seem like it now, but it does. So be prepared. Tuesday, August 31st, that was my retirement date from the LAPD. Thursday, September 2nd, I attended the regional council in the Transportation Committee for SCAG via Zoom. Not too much that was directly involving our city or our sector, because I represent them for VCTC. There wasn't too much going on for that either. They're starting to, they were, that was kind of a meeting that was in flux, because they thought they were going to do it in person. They went back to having a Zoom. So it was, wasn't, wasn't a whole lot of important stuff there for our area. On, where am I at here? Thursday, September 9th, I attended for the first time the VICA Annual Local Office Holders Luncheon in Burbank. Never having been to that before, that is the Valley Industry, help me out there, Brian, Commerce Association. It's basically like a really big chamber of commerce.
Right.
Had no idea when I got there until I picked up my name badge that I was a speaker. So that was exciting.
You were awesome.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. And I was there with all the people from Los Angeles, so I was interested to hear their take on things. What I really wanted to say when I was speaking up there was, hey, any of you guys want to come over and see me? How about, but I thought that would be rude, so I didn't do that. Also on Thursday, September 9th, VCTC is going through its search for its new director, because we lost Aaron Kettle to the MTA, I'm sorry, MetroLink, and wish him well over there. So that's what we were doing on Thursday. I also had a special meeting with VCTC to try and get down to our headhunters, what we need, what we want on our little brochure, getting somebody over there. And later that afternoon, I attended a ribbon cutting at the Kelly Evans and Associates in the mall. They're opening a new real estate office there. And it was a very nice office, very modern, very high-tech. And I'd like to point out the fact that the whole staff that runs that place, all women. It was very impressive. Friday, September 10th, I attended the VCTC meeting via Zoom. Again, not a whole lot for our city. I try to give out to the council every, every time we have one of these meetings, the reports I get from Caltrans, because it lists all the projects going on and nothing. If you have your one from last time, it didn't change. They're still moving along with a lot of things, and our projects are way down the list. September 11th, 20th anniversary of September 11th was a very moving tribute put on by the Simi Valley Sunset Rotary Club, and assisted by all the other servicing organizations there. I can't say enough about how well that was done. I was very moved and impressed to see all of our council there, reading names. A couple of our council members read names twice, because you were given the opportunity to read 10 names at a time. It's very moving. And of course, you know, I always get, because I remember that morning very well, I was, I was off that day, so I was sleeping in, and I got called by a buddy just as a second plane flew into the towers. That's when my TV went on. And the whole day, I kept getting calls, or my wife kept getting calls, actually. Is Mike okay? Is Mike okay? Because one of the people that died in the towers was a fireman, fire chaplain, I think he was a chaplain, and his name was Michael Judge. So it was a very, very intense day that day. Everybody remembers it, everybody remembers what they were doing and where they were. And I do appreciate Sunset Rotary Club doing that tribute. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with Tuesday, August 27th. I was able to attend the special unveiling of the Ossuary Wall, which commemorated Greg Stratton's contribution to this, our community, and what amazing things he has done, from being mayor for 12 years to seven years on the city council, to serving on the school board for four years, to serving on the cemetery board, the cultural arts. Really, I could go on and on about what he's contributed for our community. The mayor spoke and did a wonderful job. I will say that I, I didn't realize until I got there that this, that the wall is built on, to surround the ossuary where remains are interred. And that ossuary platform was built by my son as an Eagle Project, five years ago. And it was just so moving that, that I felt a little piece of that beautiful, beautiful place in Pioneer Cemetery. Thursday, August 26th, met with city manager, appreciate his time. On February, excuse me, on Friday, August 27th, I attended the state, Chamber State at the state town hall with Assemblywoman Suzette Valderez. I will tell, I will say that one of the things I found interesting is her involvement in the Problem Solvers Caucus, where she is one of 11 people, four Republicans, four Democrats, one that is not undecided, or whatever we call it. Yes, exactly. Independent. Thank you. I've got to get the right term, excuse me, undecided, independent. Thank you. Excuse me. But I, I was interested to hear of her involvement there, and, and that caucus, and how they're trying to find a way in Sacramento to bridge the gap between much of the conversation that's going on there. On Tuesday, August 31st, I attended our Simi Youth Council meeting. Commend Kristen Tiggnak for her excellent conducting of that. I will say that they elected all the officers for the youth council, and they will be outstanding. On Thursday, September 2nd, I too attended my SCAG Environment, Energy and Environment Committee virtually. I know there had been some discussion about that being in person. Again, there was a lot of just reports given. There wasn't anything particularly specific about Simi Valley, but I will say that there were some reports about the impact of heat on workplace and various things, which might be of interest as we do some of our, our planning going forward. Also, on that day, I attended the Simi Valley Ed Foundation Teacher of the Month, and want to commend Kelly Salisberry of Sinaloa Middle School, and Kendra Kong of Atherton Elementary for their awards that were received from the Simi Valley Ed Foundation, and for their contributions, and to all of our educators in this community. On Tuesday, September 7th, our senior center was officially opened, bravo to those who made it happen, new paint, new furniture, and it's a beautiful place to be. And safety protocols in place that make it very, very good, and masks required there as well, but programming is now starting to be, coming back. And so I just am, I'm so pleased that that facility is now open and available for our senior residents. On Wednesday, September 8th, I attended the Task Force on Business Development. One of the things that I was reminded of in that meeting is that this Friday, there is a big drive for all businesses where they can get free PPP equipment that is taking place at the park. Of course, Mayor Protim Kavanaugh can tell me the appropriate name, the S-Curve Park.
Sancho Santa Susana.
Thank you. And so that's taking place from 10 to 3. If there are businesses interested in some of that equipment that is free, please register online. And anyway, it will be a very important event. On Thursday, September 9th, I attended that with Mike as well. I'd like to just speak briefly about the 9/11 events, commemorations that were held, beautifully done again. And also, that evening on, on September 11th, councilmember Louvenus and I attended the Reagan Foundation commemoration, where Colonel Dave Sutherland spoke and really put into perspective the sacrifice of so many that went forward as a result of those horrible, horrific acts on September 11th. And I appreciated that we are not forgetting, that we were, that we will remember and go forward and fight for our freedoms, and do all that we can to maintain the freedoms that we enjoy in this beloved country of ours. On Sunday, yesterday, September 12th, I also, with Mayor Protim Didi Kavanaugh, attended St. Rosa of Lima's Blue Mass Celebration. And what a lovely event that was, where they prayed for and thanked, and, and offered support for all of our first responders, for our- offered support for all of our first responders, for our, our, our police force, our fire, our fire force, our elected officials. It was just a beautiful event. And, and thank you to all those who were involved in making that possible. It was a weekend to truly appreciate the sacrifices of so many and those who have dedicated their lives to making our lives better. And so that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Louvenos.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 24th and August 25th, I attended the Naleo Conference, which is for National Association of Latino Elected Officials. They had a lot of wonderful information about the demographic shift and how we get Latino voters out to vote and engaged in our local government. And they mentioned translating the city council meeting, so I'm glad that we're doing that. And so I did that virtually. The following weekend, I was in Boston dropping off my son at college, like I'm sure many other parents were doing, sending their kids off to college. So I, I didn't do much that weekend because I was making sure he got settled in Boston. On Thursday, September 2nd, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting. We approved two more renewable energy product, projects. I'm really excited about the work that we do there, battling climate change, battling global warming, making sure that we are creating a better, cleaner environment for our, our children and for ourselves. We just had another wildfire yesterday that we saw from the 9/11 event from the Ronald Reagan Library. And the two projects that we approved were Desert Quartz and Radiant BMT. We also approved an agreement with AutoGrid for Demand Response Implementation Services so we can measure demand from our, our customers and make sure that we have that supply available. On Monday, September 6th, I attended the Central Labor Coast Council picnic. It was Labor Day and this is something I was glad they finally had in person again. And recognize that not everyone that was a laborer got to take Labor Day off. We still saw our agricultural workers in the fields working. They never seemed to get a day off. So in recognition of all of our workers, want to make sure that we, we honor that, the, the memory of Labor Day and what it's for, to honor all the workers who make sure that we have food on our table, including those agricultural workers. On Thursday, September, no, I'm sorry, Friday, oh, my bad. On Saturday, September 11th, I too attended the 20th anniversary 9/11 ceremony at Lemon Park. And it was wonderful, they had a flag there. I don't know if anyone walked over to the display that they had in the pavilion, but they had a flag with all the names of all those who perished on 9/11 on an American flag. And I took a picture of that and I zoomed in because a very good friend of mine lost her brother that day. He was a jazz musician who lived a block from the World Trade Center. And he called her and said, sis, I'm okay, call mom and dad, I'm going to go see if I can help. And like many others who rushed in that day to help others, he never came out. So I, I found his name, I took a picture and I sent it to her to let her know that I was with her in spirit. I also attended the 9/11 ceremony at Ronald Reagan Library, which was beautiful. And there were some beautiful, inspiring stories by a Colonel and by a chaplain and by a Fire Department worker from New York. And, and I just want to point out that, you know, we did lose a lot of people on 9/11, but we also had a lot of hate and ignorance and misunderstanding after 9/11. And so I'd like to list the names of those who were killed and attacked for their faith or the perception of their faith, like Balbar Singh Sodi, Vasudera Patel, Wakar Hassan, Ali Al Mansouk, Abdul Ali Ahmed, Adel Karas, and Ali W. Ali. These were all people that were perceived as being terrorists simply because of how they looked. Some of them were Sikhs, some of them were Muslims, some of them were neither. But based on appearances, they were murdered. And I would hope that in the 20 years since 9/11, that we would grow our understanding, that we would make sure that we embrace diversity in our community here in Simi Valley and across this country and recognize that, you know, you shouldn't judge someone just based on how they look and that they are not to be perceived as the other just because of the color of their skin or their faith. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, August 26th, I had the pleasure of working at and attending the Simi Valley Police Foundation's annual golf tournament. The chief did not want to go in the dunk tank, unfortunately, but he did push the button to have the Police Foundation president fall in the dunk tank. So that was pretty good. We actually had 104 golfers. I wanted to thank Bill Klepper for all the hard work in the committee that he did on that golf tournament. That's one of the major fundraisers for the Police Foundation. And for those of you that do not know, the Police Foundation purchases all the dogs that our canine handlers have, as well as pays for their training. So it's really a good thing to have all that support. We were very happy to have that many golfers out and people were happy to be out and about again. So it was really, really nice. The favorite thing was, I don't know if I should say this, but we had, we had two police officers delivering drinks to the golfers on the course, driving a golf cart, and they really enjoyed that. They thought that was great to have a cop come give them a drink. I'm not saying what kind of drink. So, but it was fun. On Wednesday, September 1st, I had the EDC Executive Board meeting. We've got some exciting things coming up, so I'll be sharing things about that in the future. Let me see, and then on Tuesday, September 7th, I have this confused, okay, so I'm sorry. On Wednesday, the 8th, I had a bunch, three different things. We had our Police Foundation meeting. And then I had a special meeting for the Ventura County Animal Shelter, V-CAS. It was a special meeting called to discuss and hear a report on the cat and kitten situation. Twice a year becomes kitten time because of the, the cycle of, of cats and how often they can breed. So there's a, a problem going on and we're trying to find out the best ways to take care of that. One of the things that was done at, on the meeting was we had a, I don't remember her name, a doctor from Stanford, a professor. And she was, in her younger days, was a, an animal control officer. And she's gone on to become a professor. And she specializes in, in a lot of these types of things. And the newest, or not the newest, the best way to handle this is what they call TNR. You know, for all of the, the feral cats. So TNR is trap, neuter, and release. And if you continue that on a regular basis, you lower your kitten count double each time. So that's one of the things that we're looking at doing a little bit more. I know in Simi, it's been done before in the past. In fact, somebody reached out to me after that meeting and I'm going to be meeting with them on Friday to discuss a little bit about that. Simi did not have that many of the, of the, on the records that they had, Oxnard had the most. But then again, Oxnard is the first, the largest city that uses V-CAS and we're the second. So it kind of, it makes sense to do that. But if you're interested at all, if you go to the Ventura County Animal Services website, they have that program and the, the speaker that we saw is recorded. They also have other information if you're interested. And, you know, you can always help clear the shelter. They also will take donations at any point in time. On Thursday, the September 9th, I met with a gentleman who was going to be working on the, updating the mission statement for the EDC. And one of the things that I pointed out to him was that we have one of the biggest and best EDCs in the state, if not the nation, but yet we're not utilizing it in East County. So I, one of the things I pointed out that I would like them to do is to, to be able to focus more on Simi and Thousand Oaks. The programs are out there, but we need to get the knowledge that they're out there to our business community. And so that's where we seem to be, not be able, not be, not doing the best job. So he said, I wasn't the first one to mention that. So, exactly. So that will be something that we're going to be really strongly looking into. And on Saturday, September 11th, I also attended the, the ceremony that morning. It was wonderful. It was, they did a wonderful job putting it on. Our mayor did a wonderful job emceeing along with the president of the Sunset Club. And it was great to see so many people out there. Like was mentioned before, our entire city council was there. I saw a couple of the park district directors there and a lot of community members. Some you knew, some you didn't know. And everyone was just so happy to be out there, to be able to remember together and what we went through and to hope that we can be united again like we were on September 12th. So I also, that same day, I was a partial sponsor for a softball tournament called Play for a Cure. My softball team started it 24 years ago. And it's to raise money for the Histiosytosis Foundation. And 24 years later, it's still ongoing. So it was a privilege to go down there for that. And on September 12th, with Councilmember Lipster, I attended the, the Blue Mass at St. Rose. They do such a wonderful job and I'm so appreciative of everything they do and the blessings that they give to all of us, just to really help us do our job and to better represent our community and the blessings they give to our first responders to protect them and, and help them in their jobs. And finally, a major, huge, big congratulations to Mike Judge on his retirement from the LAPD. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, on Monday, August 23rd, I met with, I guess you'd call him ADA, District Attorney Tony Wald from the Ventura County DA's office and had a discussion about Brown Act and Brown Act violations. And then I too attended the ceremony at the cemetery, which named Greg Stratton and thanked him and remembered him for everything that gentleman has done. And, and I, I want to quickly throw a hint out that the Cemetery Commission would like to have a bigger sign out on Royal showing. And I told them, I says, I, I know the city manager will jump on that and get that done. And, and the reason I say that, I'm very supportive of, of the cemetery because it's a, a pillar in this community, you know, that I think there, there's graves that go back to the 1800s there. And so many of our founding folks are buried there. So it's, it's a great place to remember and, and like Stratton being buried there and the Sadlers and still in very good use and getting turned around well. So I'll talk to you later about that, but I thought if I put you on the spot now, that will, it'll just remind me.
Happy to work with them.
Thank you. Thursday, August 26th, I attended the Simi Valley Auto Dealers' meeting. And basically what they said is they're, they're doing fine. However, they're having a very difficult time obtaining vehicles to sell. And that, that does make it very difficult for a business that, that's what they're, they're for, is to sell vehicles. But at any rate, that's one of their issues. They don't have any problem with anything the city's doing or not doing, anything like that. And they're working together, seems like a very good group. I also attended the Tourism Marketing District meeting. Not a lot there, but there's a plenty of money in the tourism bank account. And so we're looking forward to, as COVID diminishes, that we'll be able to spend a lot of money on advertising to bring people into Simi Valley. Let's see here. I missed the whole week, I think it was. On the, I'll go to September 10th, at the Simi High School, Go Pioneers, if you know what I mean, DeeDee.
Go Royal.
At the game there, there was a veterans dedication that was, that singled out the 10 individuals that went to Simi High School and died in Vietnam during those years of the Vietnam War. I, I have to say, I was very fortunate that I was a good friend of one of the individuals that died. His name was Edric Stevens. He died in Vietnam in 1967 and left his pregnant wife behind. And I was contacted by his son and met with him. And then we went to the event together. And ironically, his son, when he walked up, I go, that's Edric's son. I mean, I could get him in a lineup, anything. He was very much like his dad and he served in the Army for, I think, 20-some years and then served with the Border Patrol. So quite a, a nice young man. And it was great to see him. It was great to see everybody out there paying tribute to the, the vets of Vietnam. And the thing that struck me the, the most is, I guess it was also Patriots' Day there at Simi High. And here's, all of the stands are full of young individuals that you wouldn't normally think of wearing flags, wearing very patriotic garments and being very respectful. And it was just, it was very heartwarming to see the youth in our city being very patriotic. Very happy to see that. And I'm in huge trouble. Father Shay will probably not be praying for me because I didn't show up at the Blue Mass.
He mentioned that.
And so anyway, I, I guess I'll be getting on my knees in front of him in the very near future. So, but that Blue Mass is incredible, what they do. And very much appreciated. And I'm very sorry I missed it. So anyway, that's, that's my report.
Can I just say one thing? The chief and four commanders were there at the Blue Mass. Sorry, I just had to get that in.
Fire department?
Yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad they were there. That's, that's awesome because that is a very, very special mass that they put on. And very much appreciated by the community and all the first responders. Okay, with that, now, next item. Future agenda items.
Mayor, I have a couple of requests.
Okay.
I know it's too late for September, but for next year, I would like September to be recognized as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, especially in light of the fact that we do have, you know, quite a few cancer clusters in this city. For this November, I would like Native American Heritage Month to be recognized, if, if it's timely enough. I'm looking at the city manager.
Pediatric is September 22. I'm sorry, give me the other one.
Native American Heritage Month is November. And I would like for us to, I recently went to another city council meeting and I love how they recognize the, the land that they were on, the indigenous group of people. So I, I would love for us to open our city council meetings by recognizing that we are on Chumash land.
Okay.
And then one more request. This is specifically with regard to the fact that it is fire season. And today they mentioned because we are in a drought, fire season may extend through, extend through December. I would like to, for us to look at the possibility of having a fireworks ordinance with strict liability for airborne fireworks. And it would be something that would be modeled after what the city of Azusa and several other cities have. I just want to make sure that we are limiting the possibility for fires in this area. We do have, as, as a city, we put on the Rotary Club and other entities have put on wonderful fireworks shows that are very safe. So I really don't feel the need for individuals to have airborne fireworks. It just contribute to the possibility of fires in our area.
I, I would agree to have a, agenda is where we could all discuss that because I have some strong feelings also on that subject. And we may not agree entirely, but it would certainly be a place that we could discuss the pros and cons. Be, I'll, I'll say it very quickly. Very hard for me to take away fireworks that have a state fire marshal's seal of approval and take it away from all the individuals like we do in this city. So we'll discuss that down the road.
Okay, as long as it's put on the agenda. It's, it's been brought up by several residents, so that's why I wanted.
Oh, no, there's definitely a problem with the ones that go in there and.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? I would like to bring up, or maybe just ask the city manager. We'd, we'd talked about, and I know there's a presentation coming on water from Calagis. But I want this, this body to be able to discuss. As we go forward, it's obvious that we're going to have an extreme water shortage. And I think we ought to discuss and get in front of the, what's going on and be very proactive and start having discussions on what we want to do to reduce water usage in this city. And I, I don't have any particular ideas of what it should be, but I think this council should start talking about it.
So we, we have that on the calendar, I think, for October 11th. The new general manager from Calagis will be coming to make a presentation. Our Water Works District staff will make a presentation. And on that agenda also will be a consideration of Stage Two. presentation, and on that agenda also will be a consideration of stage-two water restrictions. So we're, that is, that's on the calendar for next month.
My thought was, if we were able to discuss it, we might come up with better questions for them when they make their presentation. It may be too late to do that now, but that was my thinking, is, because we're gonna, I'm sure with our board of five, that we have a variety of ideas.
Well, and if I might ask you, clarify, Mayor, you were saying water reduction usage, I was thinking you were going to go water, identify water resource programs to generate or save more, et cetera. Can that be part of the discussion as well? Not simply the, obviously, there's a shortage of water, but, but resources that we maybe need to get ahead of to help supplement in the air, what we have in our area. Is that what you meant as well? Okay, I just.
Discuss all avenues of it.
Thank you.
So anyway, we'll, glad to hear we're moving forward on it, and we'll do that. Tonight, again, we have to adjourn in memory of people. Officer Hardmender Greewall, I'm sorry if I pronounced the name wrong, from Galt Police Department. And also, we're going to adjourn in memory of Mercedes Deacon, that is Joe Deacon's mother. Lawrence Horner, he's the former mayor of Thousand Oaks. And a lady that Councilmember Judge mentioned earlier, Margaret Noble, she was quite a lady, and a representative, and commissioner for us, and we have to say goodbye to Margaret. So with that, we'll close in their memory. Adjourned.